Good evening. I want to call the Columbia County Board of Commissioners, August 2nd, 2022, meeting to order. And ask Commissioner Galis if he'll open us with invocation.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Bow to me, please, dear friends. Our most high and most merciful Lord, we thank you for all of the gifts that you have bestowed upon us, the bounty which surrounds us. We ask that we may be worthy of all of the gifts and the grace and your mercies that you give us. Thank you for the protection of our fire and emergency services people, and come dwell with us as we consider the matters before us to improve our community. Amen.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, one nation, for God, Israel, liberty, and justice for all.
As let the record show, we have a full quorum of commissioners. Commissioners, you have the minutes from our previous meeting of July 19th in your packet, so approve all, accept a motion to do so.
I make a motion to accept as presented.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Johnson, I think we have one item to add to the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for your consideration, we asked to add item I to A. This will be a reconsideration of an item that took place at the last meeting.
Very good. Under special recognition and presentations, there are two folks who have asked to speak against zoning issue. I'm going to push that, and so before we get to that, you can speak when we get to that issue. Is there Mr. Floyd Everett here? Everett, you asked to speak about the Blind Veterans Association of Augusta. Welcome.
Everyone.
Sir, if you'll just state your name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Floyd Everett. This is 5150. President here for 20 years now.
Welcome.
Good to be back again before the board here. Give you a few things about what the Blind Veteran Association is about. I try to be brief. Blind Veteran Association was an organization that was started in 1945, March 1945, and it was commissioned by the Congress in 10 years later, 1945. We charted for the sole purpose of advocating for blind veterans. Here at Blind Veteran, we got an organization chart that goes like the national, we got 1.5 blind veterans throughout the entire United States, we got 403 approximately in the state of Georgia, in our local, that somewhere in the neighborhood of 52. That's because, you know, the come and go, a lot of the Iraq veterans in Afghanistan is not as active as we would like. I contribute as to, we gotta do a better job in trying to recruit them, better job at getting the community to know what we do. One of the things that we do is called the White Kane Day, saying he has a cane. I didn't know there were so many different types until I got to be blind. I wasn't born blind. Air Force for 15 years, and I'm served another 18. One of the organizations I worked with was the Blind Center, which is here in Augusta, Charlie Norwood Hospital, Wright's Road Road. There's only 13 of them in the United States. So you, if you're a blind veteran, you get a chance to go to, and when you are, there are some stipulations. I asked for my wife to go. They say, why? My eyes and my ears, you don't need, you're gonna have people 24/7. I decided when I want my wife to go with me, okay? And so they said, okay, you can go, but we're not gonna pay her expense. I don't need you to. But anyway, that's how that goes. Another program they got, the White Kane, every year, October 15th. What we do is all out, we publicity, let everybody know that the Blind Veteran Center is a part of the nation with the V8, Charlie Norwood, with the Blind Center located in the building there again, BVA. The BVA, everybody think we're part of the V8, we're not. V8 has money coming from the government. You're 501(c)(3) organization, they don't give us money. Got to raise it, got nonprofit avenues, like to donate for cars. Every year, we have a big state national convention. This year is gonna be this month, August 24th in DC. We're trying to get as many people as we can to go, but you know, DC, there is nowhere near what you're gonna eat up while down there, hotel. You can come here in Georgia, have a dine and dine at places, and probably have a couple dollars to go back home with, not in DC. But that's where they picked this year to have it. It is gonna be on the 24 through the 29th month, DC. This year, they questioned enough to put it off in Capitol Hill. So we expect to have a big crowd, get had one in person in two years, opposite of the pandemic. So we got that going on. We also got the state committees we have here. There's a chapter here in Augusta, there's since a teen, we got a chapter in Macon, Georgia, that's brought online, we got one in Atlanta, we got one in Dublin, and we just reorganized Macon, combined them, so they could have more members, be able to reach out to more communities, let them know what we do. Would be surprised by how many people, even in this community, don't know about the BVA. That part of it, part of it. Our sole purpose is to advocate. We went into the Charlie Norwood Medical Center, they have our monthly meetings, everybody was telling us that you can't meet in here, Mr. Everett, do you? We start something that get totally out of control, like, because everybody else's service organization wanna meet here. To my knowledge, nobody else has asked that question, can we meet here? Right now, we're the only one that meet in that building. Matter of fact, that meeting was today. Director says, my hospital, I'm in charge of running it, I'm gonna give you permission. I have that promise, Mr. Everett. That's why we meet there now, okay? Because we were scrambling around from the library to five stations to wherever we can get to meet. So he resolved that issue for us. In Canada, you know, we went to him back to, so we could appreciate the favor. That's something, we need the updated Blind Center. I opened this Blind Center here in 1994, been here that long. You live when it's full up and running, got about 18 patients come through every six weeks. How to cook, how to use the cane, they can't teach them how to drive yet, but they've been working on it. One of the things they do do is, blind veterans, most of them are entitled to a vehicle. My first question, they're gonna give me a vehicle and I can't see? Well, what they do is, they give you our allowance, able to get someone to shuffle you around to all the places. Because today, I got Barbara with me. Without her, I wouldn't be here. Been my eyes and ears all day long, she been trying to keep me in line, okay? So that's part of the V8 benefits, okay? I thank Barbara, because, you know, I don't know if I could put her with me all day long, okay? So we do, we do, we do that, they got the programs set right now, they got just about every gadgets you need, world of technology, talking wash, talking earphones, you name it. Blind veterans are entitled to get that at no cost. As long as you qualify and meet the requirements of being a blind veteran, that, all that stuff come with you. Go back home, you got a carload of stuff. Don't stop there. Get back home, VA here, tied with the BVA, they committed to keeping it up and running. Come out to my house, show them how to train it, it blew up last week, they in the process of getting it. And it ain't just for me. Every blind veteran we got in this area, okay? Most of the cities that we go to, they got a disability board set up. They had one in Richmond County, I know for a fact. They do is that they invite the Blind Veteran Association down, sit on that board and give their input on what the county could do to help improve it, have that disability. You know, it's, sometime I hear things that, you know, I wasn't used to dealing with. Can't read their mail until somebody come up for them, longer you can't go to the store, all those. Got eyes, don't even worry about it. That's, that's the part of helping blind veterans deal with their ability. They have plenty of resources, got the guys coming, got blind veterans who are pressed to deal with anxiety, they teach them how to horse ride, teach them how to do a multitude of things. That's just all free. You got a whole world of things. You got the time, got a new dorm just been renovated. Pandemic is always gonna hold up to 20 people, and then women with their ferries dog, come up and how to use it. Our skill, get a sign of the dog, and he goes to California, you go with him. Not a penny of you spend. But the thing that now they got about it, ferries dog goes to the hospital, whatever it takes to keep you up. There's a lot of more committed than others. Glad to say that Charlie Norwood here does outstanding. I've been in 170, nobody's more committed, like, because I was a customer service officer. Gotta go blind, which I do that, you're in the right spot. I would support you. I'm just here to make everybody aware, have their program here, have the Blind White Kane event, have to take that out there, everybody can know. If anybody mind, I sit down and I thank you again for letting me come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Everett.
Thank you, sir.
I don't know if y'all know, Mr. Everett. Guess it was 15 when you ran for Commissioner for District 3, wasn't it, Floyd? 14.
Cassidy, could you get with him and just get the information of the White Kane event he mentioned? Have it, okay, very good, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for the update. Thanks, everybody. Commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you. This agenda's been through necessary committee and received the necessary votes we placed on this consent agenda, so if we still agree with these items, then we'll accept one motion to approve them all.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Aries, on to new business. Mr. Malir, I believe you're up.
Sir, I make a motion to approve resolution number 22-24 as presented and authorize you, Mr. Chairman, to sign all required forms and documents.
Second.
Johnson, you want to just give us an update? This is the annual millage rate vote.
Yes, sir. And this is a, certainly a big time for Columbia County. We've got some, some very good information as it relates to our millage rate. It's come from a lot of years of, of working towards getting here and good governance and those sort of things. So I am proud to announce that the millage rate that you have before you tonight is a reduction. I know that some of our taxpayers have seen notices of increases in the paper, that's required by law. It's required by law that you advertise a notice of increase even if you leave the millage rate the same. The only time you don't have to do that is if you roll it back to what's referred to as the rollback rate. The rollback rate is a rate that we calculate that essentially says that we're getting near the same amount of taxes that we got last year, so.
The rollback rate is state function or a state calculation.
That is correct.
It's not our.
That is correct. It's a state calc, well, its calculation is based on our digest and based on our budget, but the state tells us how to go about that. That is correct. But Columbia County did not have to advertise a tax increase because we're not leaving it the same, and we're not going up, we are rolling the millage rate back in the M and O. And overall, millage rate is actually being rolled back. I will say that this is the sixth time in the last seven years that you've rolled the millage rate back in Columbia County. So then there's, you know, a lot of conversation about, you know, as taxes, as property values go up, you know, what is my Board of Commissioners doing about that? And I can say responsibly that you have been rolling the millage rate back every year. In 2020, we left at the exact same, we didn't roll it back, but every other year, we've actually rolled it back, and that offsets some of those taxes. People sometimes see higher tax bills, I think it's important to note this, because if the, if the Board of Education, for example, leaves their millage rate the exact same, that's 75% of your taxes-ish, 70 to 75%. So a lot of people's taxes actually went up even by us rolling ours back and them leaving theirs the same. Well, this year, the Board of Education rolled their millage rate back as well.
Go all the way back, they did like halfway?
They did not, that's right. They did not roll it all the way the rollback rate, but they did roll it back three quarters of a mil, which is a significant rollback, when you look at the impact that I think it's gonna have on people's tax bills. And then the county is rolling our millage rate back to 5.147. What's significant about that 5.147 is that is the lowest millage rate that we've had since 1989, so we're at a 33-year low for a millage rate in Columbia County, which is just really unheard of, that we could roll it back that far. If you look at the overall millage rate of 8.618, and let me tell you what makes that up, so the, the M and O, maintenance and operation, which is government operations to include all of our judicial services, government services and everything, and to the chairman's point, the rule of law, our courts, our sheriff, those sort of things, that makes up more than half of our millage rate, so that's half of where our money goes to. So the government operates off of the other half of that, as far as general government's concerned. That's code enforcement, roads and bridges, I mean, all the other things that we do that are not enterprise funds. But at any rate, our overall millage rate is gonna be 8.618. That's made up of the 5.147, this operating, which is the M and O, 6.83, which is debt service. And if you remember, in 2017, the voters actually voted for a one mil tax increase to, to fund certain projects in the county, the PAC being one, there were several other projects that they voted on. That one mil millage rate could actually stay the same throughout the debt service, but we can't advance refund or advance pay that debt service, we have to pay it as we go. So instead of leaving it one mil, if the digest grows, we roll that rate back. So now we're at .683 for that millage rate for the debt service, that's all we needed to pay our debt this year. And as the digest continues to grow, we'll be able to roll that back even more. So the taxpayers aren't on the hook for one mil anymore, they're down to .683 for that, for all the improvements that we made. And then the fire millage rate is a special service district that we have in Columbia County that provides money specifically for the fire department, it can't be spent on anything else. It is levied in the unincorporated part of the county, the two cities do not levy this tax, they have their own fire departments. But as you know, our fire department is an ISO-1, which is the absolute best rating that you can get. But when we started levying a tax for the fire department, and that was back in 2004, we never levied enough to be able to fully fund the fire department. So we were having to supplement that with other funds, whether it was general fund money, which means really essentially that millage rate would have to go up or stay the same, or insurance premium tax fund money that we had coming in, we were allowed to use that money as well, but we can also use that on roads and maintenance and other things. So essentially, we tied up the majority of the insurance premium tax fund money to make up the difference between the fire millage and what we needed to operate our ISO-1 fire department. So I'm very glad to say tonight, I've been working on this for, for many, many years, probably for the last 10 years, we are finally able to set a millage rate for the fire department at 2.788 that fully funds the fire department. So we won't have to be relying on that IPTF fund anymore, we'll be able to use that for maintenance and roads and some other things that we need to use that money for. All of that being said, again, the M and O millage rate is at a 33-year low, and your overall millage rate of 8.618, that includes fully funding the fire department, goes all the way back to our 2004 rate when we first started levying a tax for that fire department. So we're extremely proud of that. I do think taxpayers, although people got their assessments already, and there were a lot of people that were complaining about a tax increase, that was a little premature because the taxing, there's no increase or decrease until this board of the Board of Education sets the millage rate, the value has gone up on the property. And again, historically, people have paid higher taxes because the school board may have left theirs the same. This year, I actually think people are gonna actually see a reduction in their taxes, or maybe stay very close to where it was, although some people are seeing 20 to $50,000 increases in their values. Do you want to address the values real quick? I think it's important for people to understand it and know this, this Board of Commissioners has nothing to do with raising values on a home. The way that's done is done by an independent board, that, that board, the Board of Assessors and the Tax Assessor's Office is responsible for that. They're required by law to look at the comps, to look at the sales in a neighborhood, to be able to set the values on a piece of property. So if people's values are going up exponentially, they're going, it's because the sales in your neighborhood are that much more than they used to be. Y'all remember, I guess two years ago now, Columbia County was named the number one place to live in America, and there are people now that are getting in bidding wars on houses and paying above asking price because they want to live in Columbia County. That is raising the values of the houses. So again, I'll give my analogy, I think I would rather live in a community where my values were going up and my elected officials were lowering my taxes, as opposed to a place where my, my values were constantly going down and you were having to artificially raise taxes or raise the millage rate to be able to balance it out and be able to provide services. So we're in a really, really good place. I can't stress again how much this, this pleases us to be able to roll this millage rate back this far and to essentially have some of the lowest taxes in the state of Georgia as it relates to our millage rate, and to be able to provide the premier level of service that we provide is really unheard of, we're the envy of a lot of folks in Georgia. I'll answer any questions about it, if you have any questions about the millage rate.
One's not necessarily a question, but when I looked at the, the amount of the millage rate that was applied to, called the rule of law, the judicial and the sheriff, as well as the fire, it looks like 60-plus percent of the taxes paid.
If you use the fire, yes, sir.
Or first responders.
That's correct, 60, a little over 60%, if you include both.
I do that, I've made it known, and I appreciate the commission, because my intent, and I know a lot of the discussions we've had, we want a legacy of continuing to lower the millage rate every opportunity we get, to do the best we can to offset the increase in values. And compliments to the staff, as well as the, well as the other constitution-elected officers, because they set their budgets to a certain degree, and I've been in a few meetings each year with them, and that meeting always goes well, they understand the philosophy of the county as it relates to spending, and are always conscious to roll that as much as possible, but moving the M and O rate to a 33-year low, and I guess that, I went to Augusta College, the overall rate is 18 years?
Yes, sir, back to 2004, that's correct. Overall rate goes back to the 2003, 2004, so yep.
So I hope, I hope is the legacy of this commission will be that we continue to lower taxes.
And just, just to add, I just, I don't want it to be lost on this, you are lowering taxes, and we are able to do this, but we're still providing a level of service that is far superior of, I'm gonna say any government in Georgia, or any government anywhere, but the level of service that your staff is providing our citizens is second to none, and we've not compromised that in any way, but still able to lower the millage rate and be able to operate on what we have.
Another interesting aspect over my eighth year on the commission, retail sales have risen. I mean, eight years ago, the goal was, could we get retail sales revenues up equal to property tax? Because that's, to me, it's a fair tax, it's, everybody pays the retail tax, and we are there for the first time, am I, am I correct?
Yeah, we are, we are, and so we won't get real deep into this, I think we have to be careful because those fluctuate, and the last thing we ever want to do is to bring a tax increase before this board. I know I'm, I'm not gonna do that, I'm gonna do everything I can to avoid that.
I won't put it on the agenda.
Exactly, exactly. But we are very close now to, yeah, having, having our, our sales tax cover, not, not quite 50% of our, of our budget, which is, which is huge, yeah. Again, if it was even 40%, there'd be a lot of people that would be very, very happy with that, a lot of governments are in that 20, 30% range.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor of lowering the millage rate, please raise your right hand. This next item, we have two folks that want to speak, Stephen Claiborne and Sean Claiborne. Y'all here? Come on down. Y'all, if you're gonna say the same thing, feel free to come together. If you'll just state your name and address for the record, sir.
My name's Steve Claiborne, and I'm at 5513 Old Augusta Highway, which is across the main road from this property that we're talking about. The Planning Commission, we met with them, and they are recommending that you disapprove changing the zoning requirement here. And we're coming forth to provide you some additional information to support that decision to disapprove it. I've got three items that I want to bring up. The first is, the county already has a zoning requirement for a concrete batch plant, and that's an M1, and I'm not sure why they're trying to pigeonhole it into the S1 category. So you should disapprove it automatically because it is not correctly being zoned properly for a concrete batch plant. Second is, if you put a concrete batch plant in here, that is gonna dramatically impact the water table. All of the, the homes that are out here are on well water. When we moved out there about 50 years ago, in the 70s, the well water table, our well was 60 feet. We've had, over the years, to continually add additional pipe, we're down to almost 200 feet now because of the influx of new homes being built in that area. And we don't have a problem with that. The problem is, is if you put any kind of industrial plant or anything that starts drawing a lot of water off of that water table, as soon as we have any kind of a dry season that comes through here, that water's gonna dry up. We've had it in the past, we know that it's gonna happen. So we strongly urge that you look at this and disapprove it because of the water. The last item is, this land is adjacent to Gordon Highway. It's about two miles from one and a half to two miles from the new Gate 6. Especially in the morning and in the evening, there is a constant stream of traffic down through there. Now, you're gonna have these concrete trucks that are gonna be trying to get out and get in across this two-lane highway. Plus also, you're gonna have cement trucks, which are probably two and a half to three times as large as your concrete trucks, bringing cement into this plant. All of that traffic is going to just tie everything up, and it's going to be a very dangerous situation. We've already had several people killed right near this intersection where the Lone Oak Lane comes out over the past few years, say 10 years. So when you start adding anything that's heavy-duty moving into that two-lane highway, you're gonna have major problem areas, especially because you have school buses that stop along this way. You have any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Sean Claiborne, I'm at 128 Shell Land Drive, Augusta, Grove Town, Georgia. I am literally right behind this plant. A, if you watch the meeting notes from earlier with the Planning Commission, you'll see, we have a bunch of people here, this is a nightmare for our community, okay? The, does not bring anything, it's just a bunch of negatives for our community. The concrete, cement industry, that's the third-largest pollutant in the world, according to EPA. Not just that, but the noise alone, most of this equipment, the concrete trucks, the generator that they're planning on running, all of this is more than 80 decimals, they're on a hire. Now, you're talking about running this from three days a week, plus Saturdays from 6:00 AM to 11 o'clock at night? Just this morning, I heard the trucks backing up out of there while I'm trying to get ready for work in the morning, no big deal, I'm getting up at that time. I'm getting up at that time, but Saturdays, I like to sleep. Don't really want trucks coming in at six o'clock and getting air horns and all that. But my wife, who works at the hospital with me, she works nights. She's trying to sleep during the day. Talking all the different pollutants from the cement and everything. Want to kill bee farms that we have. Horses just, you know, walk out. Wipe off your car, you know, time to go wash it again. An hour later, oh, it's already covered in silica and everything again. This plant is a five-year lease. Only it's doing is dumping stuff on this ground and then they up and move. Does not bring anything benefit to our community. Doesn't bring jobs, going to lower our property values that you're talking about for the assessment rates. Going to increase health, which we have a lot of older and children around with asthma. It's one of the reasons Evan Gray actually moved his tree cutting plant was all that dust and everything was causing problems in the community. It just brings nothing but a bunch of negatives. So I ask that y'all do follow the planting zones. Reject us. Thank you.
Matt, you want to give us a quick rundown on the
Yes, so this is a request to go from RA to S one. One of the concerns brought up is why are we doing S one when there's already a place for it to fit in our code? M one is where this would fit as a limited use. When the applicant came in, they did say this was temporary. Instead of going and asking the commission for a M one use, go with S one and and limit it to just that use versus giving every M one use out there. It was just a different way of looking at it. But it is for a temporary use for a concrete batch plant. We have been told by the Regional Commission, CSRA Regional Commission, that they have determined this is a development of regional impact. Therefore, they have a right to review it and provide input into this process. We have not received it as of yet. We are expecting to receive that very soon. So I believe at this time, we'd actually like to postpone this till the sixteenth so you can also consider.
How will that affect, regardless of what they say? All right, whatever, when that comes back, regardless of what they say, does that impact our ability to make a decision?
It does not impact your ability to make a decision. It's just more information for you to consider when you make your decision. We don't know how they're going to, they can come back and say they're against it. They can come back and say they're totally for it. We don't know what they're going to say.
But they come back and say they're totally for it?
Still doesn't impact anything.
Irrelevant, okay.
It's irrelevant. You still have the final say so.
Any questions?
So their request is for us to wait till their information gets here for us to make that decision.
That is correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
I think procedurally, that's what, we're asking procedurally to make that to wait until we get that DRI back. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Again, I I don't think it affects your vote one way or the other, but I just think, you know, there's certain certain things that we have to do in government and then this DRI is one of them that the state requires. And I think for us to act prematurely, regardless of which way you would vote, would would be premature. I think we need to let it go through the process. And and then you you will have additional information. And again, you can take that into consideration or not. It's, this is, we're only putting it off for procedural purposes.
Questions?
Chair, I make a motion for file RZ two-two oh seven oh five to postpone the request for a reserving from RA to S one. Property located at tax map zero five four, parcel zero one zero, August sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting.
Second. Reiterate, whatever comes back, irrelevant on how we vote on the sixteenth, right?
Uh, I I would say irrelevant.
It's it's relevant, but it's not.
It's not binding.
It's not binding in any way. The state can't tell you that you have to approve it or not approve it. So again, this board's free to take whatever action it needs, but I think it's prudent to have all the information.
I'm pretty sure that our staff and our planning commission did a good job at what they did on this. I don't know what fact, but I'm not
Motion second on the floor. Anybody have any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Next item.
Okay.
Matt, you want to?
Yes, I didn't know if you want to talk about it first. So this, we did receive requests to withdraw without prejudice this next action, but it was a request to go from R two to CC. This was to allow the construction of a restaurant and two retail facilities located off of Furious Ferry Road. This is just of Evans Locks Road. But again, the applicant has requested that this be pulled without prejudice from the agenda.
Questions? Because we generally allow that.
Chair, file RZ two-two oh seven oh six. I make a motion to approve the request to withdraw. RZ two-two oh seven oh six without prejudice.
Second.
Any other questions?
And what this does is it starts, so everybody will know if anybody's questioned, it'll start the process all over.
That's right.
And pick it up wherever that is a new process.
Whole new application, whole new public hearing. It's it's basically just start over.
Motion second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. The next item, we're asked to reconsider a vote. Is Miss Leanne Usher here?
I believe we have one.
That one, what do you have?
What before?
Oh, all right.
I want to see one.
Jumping ahead. Mr. Richardson?
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion to approve the contract with ten codes lighting for streetlight procedure uptake services in the amount of forty thousand dollars.
Second.
Uh, this is a this approval to bring in a consultant to help us go through our streetlight policy. This is a task-driven proposal here. You'll see five tasks in front of you. If we were to do all of them, it would amount to forty thousand dollars. I do not foresee us using all five tasks, but they are there in the event they are needed or we are directed to use them. If you have specific questions about the proposal, I'm going to ask Mr. Titus to answer those questions. He has spent a lot of time working on this process with staff as well as with the proposal and with Commissioner Richardson or Vice Chair Richardson. Any other questions he can answer for you?
I don't have any. Like Deputy Manager, Mr. Flock, this came up about a year ago. We rejected this. I'm trying to work through it at a staff level and with some help from Georgia Power. We don't think we got any direction from Georgia Power and we're, our staff are certainly not lighting experts for sure. But they did put a lot of, a lot of time in it. I just traffic, cricket, sterling, Mr. Butler. So there's, there has been a lot of time put into this. For us to get to a resolution from experts, I think we're probably going to have to have some experts to get I think there's been a lot of questions for the streetlight district for several years now. I think we need look at it and I'm a big consulting guy, but I think this will help us get to where we can make a decision where our streetlights, how we want our streetlight districts corridor lighting and neighborhoods and certain zoning districts and whatever. I think it'll help us get to the end of the process. People to give us something that we could bring back so it would be effective this year. We don't approve any streetlight time anyway, so hopefully we'll have that information back so we can be back in the streetlight approving this timeframe. Did I, did I miss anything? Did you want to add anything, Carl?
No, I think oh, the current policy happened in nineteen ninety, served us well. Has been. Questions have come up, some gaps that we see. Partial lighting for upper contributions upper contribution front cost is important. Right now, so bring somebody on that is expert in street lighting, which not solid resolution to hopefully carry.
I think I was the one who put it on debate, only because I break out in hives every time we talk about hiring consultants. Always want to thoroughly talk it through.
We, we, we've worked on this for a year. We've, we've met with Georgia Power. We've called with Cobb County, with Forsyth, with Kenneth policies. Policies are more robust. However, through those conversations, questions, answers, up several drafts of policies. Like to continue. Final mark. Consultant they've committed.
Other questions or comments? Motion second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. We've had a request to reconsider a vote. We took last yes, is asking us to reconsider and she was going to talk us through it.
My name is Leanne Usher and my address is nine fifty-six Kestrel Drive, Evans, Georgia. Okay, if I just read my statement that I wrote?
Absolutely.
On July seventh, my application for a conditional use license was denied and I would like to please ask for a reconsideration. I regret not giving my presentation at the last meeting because I feel that I was misunderstood. What I'm asking for is a conditional use license to perform single needle and cosmetic PMU body art micropigmentation at the Vogue Hair and Beauty Salon on Washington Road. This conditional use will be used by me and only me performing these services in a single private room inside of the salon. I'm the only person in the salon that will be offering these services and who will be licensed to do so. This will not be a tattoo parlor, but a private space inside of the salon that will operate only during salon business hours and the private room be used by no one but me. Single needle micropigmentation or tattooing also includes areola restoration for mastectomy patients, eyebrow hair strokes in microblading and anything else at a small scale and cosmetic related below the neck. I feel like my services do not fit in at a tattoo parlor and that is not what I'm asking for in my circumstance. With this license, I'll be able to provide these services to women in a private setting that they are most comfortable in. State law allows cosmetic micropigmentation using single needle instruments and equipment in salons and similar establishments as long as it is, it is in a separate private area. This is a service that is for women by women. And I am qualified, trained and licensed for this job that I have fallen in love with and I need this license to do that in my own private room inside of Vogue. I love working in Columbia County and I hope that your reconsideration will grant this conditional use and allow me to continue my small, my small independent business here.
Questions? Mr. Reconsider.
I have a question for Mr. Spurley. Can we limit of license tattoo? Just we, they're could they put ten in that or?
That's what it says, actually. Eight.
Eight, nine.
Eight and nine.
Make sure you had, you asked the question, can we limit the number of licenses? We don't have anything to do with licenses.
No.
You can limit to, to suites, yes.
Suite number, but not the number of licenses.
Yes, sir.
That was my question.
Thank you.
Or reconsider?
Actually, I have a, I have a comment. I don't believe at this point there's any new information in this matter that we didn't have in front of us when we voted at the previous meeting. Please keep in mind that this applicant is now asking for this because she was basically caught operating outside of our standards and that's why it's brought to us now. And it could be considered that if we reconsider this, it could be viewed that we are rewarding that behavior.
Please. Make a motion to reconsider the action taken at the July nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two commission meeting on RZ two-two oh six oh four request for a conditional use for a tattoo parlor, tax map zero seven nine, parcel zero nine eight.
Second. Edition.
So this, so you have a motion to reconsider. If you, if you reconsider, there'll be another motion. If you choose to, procedurally, you would have to approve the motion to reconsider.
Correct. There's a motion to reconsider. Second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries. Reconsidering.
Right. I make a motion to approve the request for a conditional use for a single needle tattoo of the property located at tax map zero seven nine, parcel oh nine eight D with the following condition. The approval of a single needle tattoo is for suites eight and nine only. Mr. Chair, I would like to make a small comment. I know we don't do this. Feel like this commission and the commissioners try extremely hard to please our constituents. Sometimes people disagree. Even though I feel like we're doing the best job we can. We all care about our county. This time, I did get an email that kind of disturbed me. I just want to make the comment, rather than email, I think courtesy, talk to the commissioner herself would be best. One of the comments was that because of the job we're doing, people eighteen to fifty are leaving the county. That is incorrect. That is sixty-one percent of our population. There were other negative comments made that I won't discuss, but that is not the way to handle county business. That's not the way to get ahead, get your point across on the commission. And that's, that's just stating what I feel. And the reason is that I feel like we do an excellent job trying to please our constituents.
It is a challenge and generally speaking, I won't say every vote. Most votes make somebody happy and somebody mad.
It, it does, it does.
We got to think of that before we run for office.
Yeah.
Too late, yeah. So there's a, a motion, a second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Passes three to two. Okay. Legal matters.
No legal matters tonight.
That's right. Request for review by committee. None of those. Any public comments or participation? Executive session, we have four items that I believe we can deal with right here and now when we're in the executive session. I believe Commissioner Richardson, you have these.
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion to approve one thousand three hundred dollars to Culver House, tax map zero six five zero one four G, fourteen thousand dollars to tax map zero six five zero one four L, three thousand five hundred dollars to Hope Brantley. Tax map zero six five zero three zero, three thousand four hundred dollars to William and Rita, Hannah Hill. Tax map zero six five zero three five, eight thousand one hundred dollars to Michael and Peggy. Tax map zero six five zero one five C, ten thousand four hundred dollars to Ward. Tax map zero six five zero one five D, twenty one thousand dollars, three hundred dollars. Twenty one thousand three hundred dollars to here at Master Funding and LLC, tax map seven one zero zero two one, to right of way and or easement for lighting project.
Second, but I have a question. On parcel twenty-eight, the Culver House property, our, our original offer was twenty-four thousand? But they countered back at thirteen hundred dollars? How did it go down? How, that's quite a swing. Is that an error?
I believe that twenty-four thousand is not correct. It's point oh three nine acres of permanent easement. On the side over here, your, your total offer is thirteen hundred dollars. The twenty-four thousand is not.
So we didn't originally offer them twenty-four and they said, no, only give me thirteen hundred bucks. That's not.
I wish people would do that, but that's I wish people would do that, but that's not how it works. The offer is the important part.
That is correct with the motion.
Motion's second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Motion to accept donation. Forty-one square. Parcel zero-seven-four, zero-one-three. From James.
Second.
There's not a pond or anything on this getting donated to us, is there? Okay.
A little small remnant that was of use to anyone else that joined a piece of property already on, so make it part of our green space.
Don't want any ponds.
Motion's second on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Wave twelve thousand dollars. Hunch and. Five-six to a permanent. Fire station.
Second.
Questions? Ever raise your right hand? Carries.
Accept a donation. From Martin Marcus Schurth. For Wengate Sewer Project.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. According to my paperwork, only one more motion that needs to be made.
Chairman, I motion that we adjourn.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. We adjourn.